And so I can't wait to get started. Action item number one is the approval in the minutes of February the second. May I have the motion to approve it?
Mr. Agar.
Seconded. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Nays, abstention, the motion carries. Policy item number one B one.
Okay, this is City College, Master of Science in Sustainability. A common definition of sustainability is using, developing, and protecting resources at a rate and in a manner that enables people to meet their current needs without compromising the ability of future generations to meet their own needs. This innovative program, the first of its kind at CUNY, is designed to prepare students to plan and implement strategies for sustainable development of energy, water resources, air quality, waste management, transportation, construction, and urban planning. The interdisciplinary curriculum integrates architecture, engineering, and science. The program responds to a growing national need as well as to the mayor's offices initiative, Plan New York City 2030, a greener, greater New York, by preparing trained professionals capable of implementing this ambitious plan. The program will train our students how to bring all relevant tools to bear on the essential problems of sustainability.
Any questions?
I had a comment. Well, go ahead.
Hi, Professor.
Some of the letters of support were addressed to Dean Mogalescu, and the subject line was the CCNY Workforce Development Initiative Proposal. Is that, it wasn't clear to me how that was connected with the sustainability program.
Okay. Are there people here from City College?
Yes.
Oh, there's, there's the Provost, Provost Zevdegon. Do you want to come? Please, please come.
Should I have to press a button?
No. It's all yours. You're right.
Professor Latif Gigi from Mechanical Engineering, who developed, who headed the development of this program, initially applied to Dean Mogalescu for Workforce Development Initiative. He tried to obtain some funds so that faculty can work on the development of this program. It was unsuccessful, but nevertheless, he obtained letters from various sources supporting the programs, and those letters were used subsequently in the proposal.
Chairman Schmidt?
I'm very supportive of this. I think this looks like a very fine program, and certainly very responsive to powerful needs. I would like the faculty members and yourself to consider whether the study of economics should not be an essential element of the program. It may be, and I just don't see it, but, but in the, in the list of courses that were, I guess, typical kinds of courses, perhaps, I didn't see any economics courses, and I would think that a lot of problems that will come up under the umbrella of sustainability will require some economic analysis to make, to make sense of. Now, so it's just a comment that I'd like the academic planners of this to, to just think about. I'm not, I, I have no, I'm not saying it should be this course in macroeconomics or something else, but I just think it would be worth focusing on that as one of the interdisciplinary legs that the program needs to rest on.
Professor Gigi can address it.
Actually, several people, they've said, and we did add, of course, in, in the Economic of Sustainability, and it's required. So everyone who's going to be in the program will be taking a course in Economics of Sustainability.
Good, good.
Speaking as an alum of City College, the School of Enviro, School of Architecture, in the old day, used to call School of Architecture and Environmental Studies. This looks very much like the old agenda almost, but it is more integrated now. Good work. Item number one B two.
Okay. One, one B two is against City College, an MA in the study of the Studies of the Americas. This interdisciplinary program examines ways in which the Americas, including North, Central, and South America, have been constructed in the past and redefined in the present. The curriculum introduces students to methodologies from across the humanities and social sciences, and includes a foreign language requirement, language reading proficiency requirement in French, Portuguese, or Spanish. The program is being offered through the Center for Workers Education, which now has official status as a division of CCNY, and is geared towards the adult student. It will prepare students to enter a variety of fields related to international relations or who are seeking an advanced program in order to obtain permanent certification as classroom teachers.
Any questions, Professor?
No question. I just have a comment about the last, the first, the first course, and, and now this one. I think they're both very interesting, and I really like them.
By the way, if there are no objections, I'd like to move them as a block and vote at the end in one, one block. Item number one B three.
Okay, one B three is from Baruch College, an MS in Entrepreneurship. This program builds upon the existing BBA and MBA at Baruch in Entrepreneurship. Similar to all MS, MS programs in business at Baruch, this program is designed for students who seek a concentrated focus on a particular subject area. The program is specifically tailored for students who have backgrounds in entrepreneurial ventures, are part of family businesses, or are interested in starting their own businesses. The proposal includes extensive comparisons with similar programs currently offered within the United States and the New York region. The rigorous curriculum is interdisciplinary and includes courses in management, human resources, marketing, finance, and law, as well as internship opportunities.
Want to move on to the next item?
Okay. Number four is from New York City College of Technology, a Bachelor of Technology in Industrial Design Technology. This program addresses both the theory and the hands-on experience of industry-standard tools that are needed for the field of manufacturing and industrial design. The graduates will possess cutting-edge skills in computer-aided drafting and design, allowing them to enter careers in the engineering and industrial design fields. The graduates will also be prepared for graduate study in engineering technology and industrial design fields. New York City College of Technology's own AAS programs in mechanical engineering technology and industrial design technology will articulate, articulate with the proposed program. Articulations with other colleges are also foreseen. The program would be housed in their Department of Mechanical Engineering Technology, which already has the needed state-of-the-art equipment such as a rapid prototyping machine, a CNC, which is a computer numerical controlled milling center, an injection molding machine, and a cutting water jet machine. This equipment is all relatively new and has at least two-year maintenance plans in place.
Comment?
Question about the articulations. You said that they were foreseen. I'm just wondering what's happening on, on that front. The, the explanation mentions Bronx community and Queensborough, but the text actually mentions LaGuardia and Ostos.
Right. If I may, the agreement with LaGuardia has been signed, discussions with Ostos are underway, and existing programs at the AAS level with basically Queensborough and Bronx, since this is built as a two plus two, it makes a statement in there that those students are automatically accepted into the program.
Oh, I see. That's, and that's the Bronx and Queensborough?
The Bronx and Queensborough have associate degrees in mechanical that relate to this program.
Okay.
Go on.
Go on to item number B five.
Okay. Number five is John Jay College of Criminal Justice, a BA in Gender Studies. This rigorous liberal arts program combines analytic and research techniques from disciplines in the humanities and social sciences, and prepares students for a wide variety of graduate or professional studies. The program examines the constructs of gender in the context of social institutions, laws, and policies. John Jay has faculty with relevant expertise in several departments. Two-thirds of the courses are already offered at the college. The program does not require new full-time faculty. John Jay College has committed to maintaining its status as the preeminent institution in the fields of criminal justice and forensic science by enhancing its undergraduate programs through the creation of liberal arts majors that will support the skills students need to excel in their chosen professions or graduate work. Gender Studies is a logical addition to the college's liberal arts curriculum because it queries the institutional linguistic and social practices that determine the different and sometimes unjust treatment given to men, women, and intersexed individuals.
Okay. Comments?
Another question about articulation. John Jay, of course, also has, has these two plus two programs, and I think the, the program mentions articulation with Ostos. Are other plans in the works, does two plus two?
Anybody from John Jay here?
Yes.
Yes.
Anywhere where there's a mic.
Identify yourselves.
Hi, I'm Allison Pease, Chair of Gender Studies at John Jay College. At present, the, we have completed an agreement with Ostos, and we have not initiated any other articulation agreements. Doesn't mean that we're not open to it, but in that we didn't yet have a major, we, we knew we had to have at least one going, and we will certainly work on increasing that number.
Fascinating program. I'd love to take myself.
You can re-enroll again.
You may, may have noticed, a lot of these new programs are interdisciplinary, which is, I think, wonderful.
Yeah, very exciting. Yeah. Okay. Next one? Yeah, B six.
Okay, number six. Hunter College, MFA in Playwriting. This program will prepare students for careers as professional playwrights. By contrast to the existing MA in Theater, which focuses on literary history, theory, and criticism, the new program combines literary analysis with a strong focus on creative writing and play production. Every student will have his or her play produced. In addition to its existing high-quality graduate faculty, Hunter College plans to recruit prominent critics and writers to serve as visiting faculty. This is made feasible by generous private donation received by the college in support of the program. Questions?
Questions, comments?
I love Tina Howe's description of her grading standards. I'd sort of like to adapt that for some of my own syllabi.
She probably uses it in a play somewhere.
She imagines a dialogue between her and this.
Well, she's been with us for a very long time, and this is a very exciting culmination of having her with us to really be able to teach her craft in this terminal degree, so we're very excited.
I think this is terrific, but it, it adds on to Hunter's extraordinary array of writers and professional artists who are embodied in the curriculum, and it makes it a very, very exciting place. So I, I think this is a great addition.
Thank you. We're finding this year enrollment, just the applications are up for all these creative programs as people are re-envisioning themselves.
You're going to need more resources.
How can you guarantee producing your plays and staging them? Isn't that quite costly?
Well, I think the idea is to do a piece of the play, a part of it, and we do have, we have wonderful theater space, we have the K Theater, and unfortunately, we've probably let it be used by too many outside people. So our Chair, wonderful Chair of our Theater Department, Barbara Bosch, is here, and part of the negotiation with the department was to allow more spaces to be used. And we also just received a grant from the Low Foundation to refurbish our Low Theater, so it's now air-conditioned and heated in the winter, a very big thing for us, so we could actually use it year-round. So while space is always at a premium, and we are optimistic about being able to raise additional funds. We did get a million-dollar grant to name the program, and we've been working with some of the theater foundations, and I think there's a real interest in the budding playwriting community. So it doesn't take that many resources, it takes some, and we're optimistic we'll be able to do it.
Thank you. Any other questions? Comments? Okay, let's go on to the next item.
Okay. Number seven, Queens College, a BA in Chinese. According to the data of the Modern Language Association, Chinese, by which I mean, in this case Mandarin, is one of the fastest-growing languages in the United States. This proposed liberal arts program prepares graduates to have a high-level mastery of the Chinese language, as well as knowledge of Chinese history, culture, and literature. Most students will already have a background in Chinese as heritage speakers, or will have had high school studies in Chinese. Students will be well-prepared for graduate studies in a number of fields. An education track leading to initial teacher certification in Chinese is also being planned.
Any comments? Okay, not?
Okay.
Yes, okay, go right ahead.
Again, about articulation, LaGuardia, one of the faculty members in my department has moved over to other departments and teaches Chinese. So LaGuardia and Queensborough are, you know, described here as, as offering Chinese. Is there an articulation?
The Provost is here, Provost Gieses, from Queens College.
Thank you. Mister Chairman, Professor William McClure is here. If I cannot answer the question, you will help me. There is no associate degree offering LaGuardia, if I understand. We are going to accept all the credits that the students will earn in LaGuardia in the program, will give full credit.
Next item?
Okay. Number eight. Yeah, maybe you should stay there, just in case. Number eight is the BA in Classics being proposed by Queens College. This rigorous liberal arts program emphasizes cultural knowledge in the history, art, literature, and philosophy that forms the understanding of the classical heritage of the West. Students will become expert in the study of classical civilizations. Although all required courses will use materials in translation, students may also choose to study Latin or Greek. This program will provide excellent preparation for a number of graduate programs. Queens College already has a highly qualified faculty, and all required courses are already offered there.
Any comments?
Just a question about the languages, I guess. It's very, it's very clear from the proposal that, that you're sort of switching around the, the language versus the culture, and the language will be supplementary. Is it, I think, I think the, the course does require a semester of elementary Latin, or is that, or is that also optional?
That is optional.
That's optional.
I share the concern that perhaps some of you have around the table some months ago when the concept was brought. How can you study classics without studying the classical languages, in this case Greek and Latin, of course? However, over the time, I have been convinced that because they are authoritative translations and authoritative commentaries on all the works, on all the known works related to classical, to ancient Greece and to Latin, someone can understand the culture of these two civilizations without a great proficiency in the languages. And also, I hope that once the students start studying this civilization, they will become interested, and the program provides them for the study of the language.
This is fixed. You will not be requiring either language for this degree.
Eventually, you won't master the language with these degrees.
You will or will not?
No, you won't.
So that students coming out of this program, and I'm not an academician, so excuse me. So students coming out with this degree will not be required to have a knowledge of Latin or Greek, so they cannot explore their own interpretations of great works?
You are correct. They won't have, they will not necessarily have the mastery of the language, so on their own, to read the originals and passages.
But you should say that the program focuses more on, classics in this sense is classical history and literature, and just as you might study all kinds of other, you know, you study history of other eras where you don't read it necessarily in the original, this is similar. It's called classics because it's the period of the Romans and the Greeks, but it's not, and it is not uncommon in majors, classic majors these days, that you do not have to know Latin or Greek.
I'm afraid I'm too new. Committee members permitted to speak on these?
Yes. Well, yeah, 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 of course. Go right ahead.
I have, I have a tough time imagining someone majoring in French in this country, and French literature, and not being able to read or write French proficiently, because I have heard every scholar say that until you can read or write Fr- just, I'm just taking that little narrow bend, of French literature, you miss things, even with the greatest translations. I won't bother with English and not understanding English to read F. Scott Fitzgerald.
The emphasis is not on the literature, it is on the culture. So we can have a person who studies the effect of a particular period of Euro, of the European history and culture, and the contributions of France and Germany, you know, without mastery of the language.
Well, I want to go on record as a non-academician and say that I think that is a flaw of this degree. Am I permitted to do that?
Yes. The record will reflect what you said.
I don't want my scholarly friends to say that.
All right.
If I may ask, as I understand it, this is actually to encourage people that are already learning the classics to, to really spend a little more time on it. It's not so much that you're creating something new, you're not adding any courses, you're just trying to entice them to spend more time in, in, in the field by giving a degree for it. Is that correct?
Yes.
But the university, Sam, is going to give a degree. This university is going to say to students, you have a degree in classics.
You know, maybe we should explain, there's, there's an, already a degree that has the language emphasis at Queens.
Requirement or?
Yes, requirement.
And what is that degree?
Do you want to speak to that? What's, it's called Latin?
Yeah. It's classic, it's Latin or Greek. We already have these degrees, and we already teach the languages, so we'll continue to teach the language. This is for people who will have exposure and understanding of the culture, but
In the history.
They will not necessarily in the history have the mastery of the language.
So if you're interested in the language, you take the language major. If you're interested more in the history and culture, you would take this major.
If, if I may, it's, it's, it's difficult to separate them completely that, that way, and I think it might have been better, or might still be better, if, if you required, I think, a year of either Greek or, or Latin. I realize that those languages, you know, I suffered through Latin, I, French is wonderful, but I, I, I find it difficult to, to imagine someone really understanding French culture or Roman culture without knowing some of the language and being able to read in the, in the original. I think that you get a kind of intimacy, if you will, with the culture when you read, even after a year, which is really nothing, but, you know, seems like a, a possible practical solution, to read the language itself.
If I may ask, did you consider requiring the language, and you rejected that idea, or you never considered?
We already have programs.
No, but to requiring it for this degree, some basic classical language, Greek or Latin.
We already have programs, otherwise, and this is the difference of this proposed program, are from those that already exist.
So you don't, you definitely, specifically don't want to require it?
Chairman Schmidt, do you want to say something?
Well, I, I think if we are going to talk about the possibility of asking the faculty to reconsider this and include some language study as part of it, we ought to be clear that our, our, our concern, anyone who wants to study ancient Greek should, should, that of course should be welcomed by the college, but ancient, there's a big difference between Latin and ancient Greek. And one year of Latin study can actually make it quite feasible for, for a student to read most of the, of the, of the great works. Speaking is, we don't care, really. This is about reading. So I, I think it would be, I, I think the faculty might want to consider saying that a year's study of Latin would be, would be a valuable addition to this. If you want students to, to be able to master ancient Greek, then that's much, much more difficult, and, and it's a great thing to do, but you, you would scare students away from this program almost universally if you had any pretense of saying you want them to be able to read ancient Greek. Latin, on the other hand, if you focus on it a little bit, it's, it's not so difficult if you, for, for reading.
Four years of Latin?
Omni agalia est de wispe.
If not, then I'm going to ask for a motion to move these eight items in a block, item one B one through one B eight. Second? Seconded.
Would you consider a friendly amendment to item one B eight, that the faculty who have been in charge of, of, of formulating this excellent Classical Studies major, which I think all of us are, are very enthusiastic about, consider whether a year of Latin as a, as an essential element of the major would strengthen the, the academic quality of the major? And report back to the committee at some point what their conclusion is?
Are you meaning about that?
Is that?
That's to scare some away, but.
Okay. All right. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Nays? Abstentions? Okay, informational item.
Okay. I'd like to update the committee on three information items. The first one, having to do with the master plan, CUNY's master plan. So you may recall that the board approved the CUNY master plan last June. This was the plan for 2008 to 2012. It then went to be considered by the Regents, the New York State Regents, who discussed it at meetings that they had in January and February. And without us, they explicitly wanted to discuss it on their own at that time, and then they invited us to come in March to discuss it with them. And President Hotzler was there, as were Dean Crook, Director Dawes, Vice Chancellor Moore, University Dean Tatchick, and Director Rosa, and I, we're all there. We were first on the agenda, and as it ended up, they questioned us for almost one and a half hours. We were very frank with them about our strengths and our ongoing challenges, and we emphasized the importance of obtaining and using good evidence in everything that we do. They had probably three themes to their questions, three concerns. One was teacher preparation, another was college readiness, you know, in our interaction with the public schools, and the third was performance gaps, their concerns about the fact that at some colleges, the students from underrepresented groups do less well, significantly less well than the other students. At the end, by the end of that one and a half hours, they were asking for our advice, and they were asking what they could do to help us, and this was the higher ed committee. They then proceeded to vote unanimously in favor of our master plan, and the next day the whole Regents voted unanimously for our master plan. So it went very well. The second information item that I wanted to do was to give you an update on enrollment management, which, you know, has been a continuing concern from what's going on. As we discussed in this committee before, we have a great deal of evidence that our enrollment will be increased enormously next fall, even more than it was this past fall. We think it's due to two factors, our increased reputation and also the economic situation. As of now, this has been true for the past several months. As of now, this has been true for the past several months, we're running 11% ahead in applications for next fall as compared to the previous fall. That includes a 30% increase in transfer applications for next fall.
Into, into the senior colleges?
All colleges, all together, all together. We also know though that this spring, the majority, sorry?
Both ways or any way?
Oh, both ways. I'm talking about from outside, from outside.
Transfers in?
Yeah, transfers in from outside CUNY. We also know though that this spring, the majority of our enrollment increase this spring compared to last spring was due to increased retention. So we're both getting more new students and we're retaining more students whom we had. We've now had three phases of Fall '09 admissions. We do our admissions in phases, I think it goes up to something like six phases. We're now through phase three. And I should say that in terms of how many students get admitted in each phase is dependent both on the number of applications we have and the quality of those applications, but also on how fast we process the applications. And we are processing applications much faster, like twice as fast as we were last year due to the fact that we hired a lot more people in the admissions office and we also increased our efficiency. Through phase three for Fall '09 admissions, looking at all admissions, both of transfers and of new freshmen, the senior colleges compared to third phase last year for Fall ' '08, the senior colleges have admitted 10% more students and the comprehensives have admitted 39% more students. And the community colleges have admitted 61% more students. But as I said, keep in mind that some of this has to do with everything being moved earlier, right? But we, as I said also, we have indications that not only are we getting more applications, but our retention may be up, we also, it may be that our yield is up. That's the number of students who actually come after you admit them. So we're watching that very carefully. There's no question that next fall, we're going to exceed our previous all-time enrollment record, which was 253,000 headcount in credit-bearing courses in 1973 when tuition was free. We're definitely going over that. We are continuing to meet and plan how to deal with the many extra students that we will be getting. Both the president's spring retreat and a special meeting two weeks ago of the chief academic officers and the chief administrative officers focused on this topic. We've met with each senior college individually and we've met once and are about to meet a second time with the community colleges, which is where the brunt of the pressure we think is falling. Because what's happened is the senior colleges have increased their admission standards, which helps to keep their enrollment, you know, not growing too much, but that means more students get rejected and they therefore want to go to the community colleges, which already have more applications. So we think that's where the brunt of the admissions pressure is going to fall. But we are determined to do everything we can to maintain access while also maintaining quality, which is absolutely essential. We're continuing to consider the possibility of not admitting students for the fall up until the very end of the summer, cutting it off a little sooner, somewhat sooner, which also will enable us to have more time to test the students, to place them if they need remediation in proper classes, find good instructors for them, and to get them in the right, in the right kind of classes. But if we don't admit them until the end of the summer, then we're going to have students that we say it's too late. And so what do we do in those cases, students who apply at the end of August for the fall? And we are now formulating plans, what to do in those cases. We're discussing the options, including offering them a fall experience that would address their, any remedial needs they might have. Just as we now do in the summer for students who are coming in September, we could do in the fall and have students come in January if they don't let us know they're interested in coming here until the very end of the summer. We're going to continue to watch this very carefully. This is totally unprecedented for CUNY, this situation. We don't know, we may have some students applying at the very end of the summer who have recently lost their jobs and would be potentially excellent students. We have to keep our eye on that. We have to keep our eye on maybe some programs will have room for students whereas other programs will not, so we can't necessarily make a unilateral decision for a college. But we are going to do everything possible, as I said, to maintain access, maintain good communications with the applicants and the students, and maintain quality at all at the same time. So, yeah.
When you're finished, I'm sorry.
Well, I'm finished on enrollment management.
If I might, Mr. Chair, Vice Chancellor Lo, in real summary, what are some of the steps that you are planning to take to mitigate the issue of such a huge increase at the community college level? You said you want to make certain that all the quality, everything in there, what are some of the steps you are taking?
Well, we're, we're looking at providing the community colleges with additional funding to use for incoming students. We have many, you know, we have summer immersion programs that are for, many of the, the great majority of the students who come to the community colleges have remedial needs and so that will help with that and help with better orientation. Of course, we're also working with colleges to make sure that as many faculty are hired as possible, which is really essential. Those are some of the steps.
So it's really one of the key, key steps will be hiring more faculty?
Oh, absolutely.
As opposed to putting additional workload on existing faculty?
Oh, no, we, yeah.
Well, this enrollment issue would make an interesting case study for the new program in sustainability. Because these increases are not sustainable. I mean, we've looked at increases of 2%, 3%, 4% a year and that's manageable, but 11% on a base of 250,000 students and even larger percentage gains possibly in the community This is going to require us to make a very fundamental assessment. The Cal State system has said they're not going to take certain students who would otherwise have been automatic admits into the Cal State system under their, under their previous practice for decades. The University of California saying the same, saying the same thing. We certainly don't want to do that, but we have a funding situation that takes no account of our enrollment. It's crazy. And, and we can't let the, such an influx, such an influx has the potential to really disorganize this university's academic, academic mission. And so I think this committee has got to work with you, Dr. Lo, and everyone, so that we really as a board have a strategy so we're not just being inundated at a time when we're already, we're already terrifically overcrowded and we're already terrifically understaffed in terms of full-time faculty. So this is, these percentage increases have got to make us raise fundamental questions about our, our academic mission, our responsibility to the state and the city. Because you're talking about something that if you had something like that two years in a row. And, and the likelihood is that we will. So, so this is a very, this is a very serious and very fundamental issue for the chancellor to grapple with and it's, you know, and it's a, and we can't solve it in the way that we're financed.
Mr. Chair, is this information, or has this served, this information been made public in the same way that financing and raising money?
Chancellor did discuss this in a very serious manner.
And I know that in the conversations that the chancellor has had with the governor and the mayor and others, that this, this situation has been, you know, very strongly emphasized. And so I think the public policy players are aware of it, but, but they, but they not created a financing system, you know, in contrast to what they do for K-12, that deals with this problem at all, rationally. Doesn't, in fact, it doesn't deal with it at all.
You know, on the one hand, it's a very positive thing.
Yes, sure.
But the issues it raises have to be addressed.
I, I think it is very positive and it's in many, many ways, but very, very challenging. And, you know, you imagine a third more students in this system? You cannot, you can't imagine that. Yet that could be what a couple of years-
Right.
-of the kind we're experiencing could actually produce for us to, to deal with. And so I'm not making a speech for any purpose other than saying we've got a, a very fundamental strategic planning responsibility to figure out, okay, what does this mean? How much can we cope with?
Especially at the community board level, I mean, community board, college, community college level-
Yes.
Where, you know, you have the built-in price incentive to attend during the differential in the tuition rates-
Yeah.
-between senior colleges and the community college.
And they know, and all you need to be admitted is a high school diploma or a GED. We're already, yeah.
Have we given, I know that we only just, we've only just begun with our online offerings. Have we begun to, I guess systematically look at increasing the offerings online considering spatially? We're not going to be able to.
Yes. We've been talking about online and increasing that greatly and also hybrid, which is where part of the class is online and part is not. One of the things that we did in the president's retreat and also in the meeting of the chief academic officers and the chief administrative officers was to ask for specific ideas about how to deal with this. And one of the ideas that came up is if you have two hybrid classes, which both meet Tuesday, Thursday, the same time, one day a week, one of them has the classroom, the other day is the, the other, like Tuesday, one has classroom, Thursday, the other one has the classroom, you only use one classroom, but you have two classes.
Right.
Right. And they do online the rest of the time.
Okay.
And we have many other ideas like that.
Funny you should mention that I was having lunch with somebody, the chief technology officer from Adelphi, your former, and they are doing the same thing. They're doing the hybrid of online and restructuring their resources. They're having the same issues as we do.
But we'll still need faculty offices.
Chancellor, we were discussing, you know, the-
I think this is a very serious issue for us. It's so serious that we devoted a good part of the president's retreat that took place several weeks ago on this issue alone. I don't think there should be great euphoria of just, you know, large enrollment growth. I mean, the real issue here is, do we have the capacity to really give the kind of academic experience and the level of quality that we have worked so hard over the past few years to embed into the culture of this university? And that's a real challenge for us. We cannot keep up with managing full-time faculty at the levels with respect to this big enrollment growth. And I'm deeply concerned about that. We also have physical limitations on our campuses and that's another problem that we have. So if our enrollment growth was dominated, if the variance was explained largely on the basis of retention, then I would be fine, but that is not necessarily the case. Some part of it is retention, but these are new students coming in and you just cannot continue with, with having the resource base that we do without making some adjustments on how we engage with students and how we admit students to various campuses and various programs. So this is something that is being discussed in great detail and with a lot of vigor with much, much participation, not only with our presidents and the central administration, but with faculty groups as well. You know, we are, we are the beneficiary of two dynamics. One is the economy that we're looking, that we're living through. And our pricing is certainly a great advantage to us relative to private universities, but in addition to that, the university's reputation has been burnished. And there are, you know, I always say that higher education is a good example of an efficient market. Everybody has access to the same information and then they make judgments on the basis of those, of those common factors that they have. And when people, the marketplace is looking at CUNY, they're seeing a university that has really taken on some very serious issues and changed policies and ways of operating and embedding standards and all of the things that all of you are familiar with. So as a result of that, we're getting this large flow of students and it's this balance of moral imperative to give students an opportunity to study, but on the other hand, just inviting them to study and knowing that you don't have the capacity to engage academically at the level that you want is pushing in the other direction. So it's that balance that we seek to, seek to have some equilibrium on.
Should I go on to the?
Yeah, last item.
Okay. The third information item, I wanted to also update you on the planning for a new community college at CUNY. And to give you a little background on that, in February of 2008, the chancellor asked Senior University Dean John Mogalescu to explore the possibility of CUNY opening an additional community college. Now, in part, maybe a small part, this was to address the growing enrollment, but the truth is that the size of this community college is actually only a fraction of our total growth per year, the proposed community college. So more of the reason was to determine if a new model of a community college could significantly increase student success, especially graduation rates, which are a national issue in community colleges. So under Dean Mogalescu's leadership, a concept paper was formulated for the new community college that had the following innovative features. First of all, a limited, it would have a limited number of programs with established articulation agreements or joint registration with the senior colleges. And all the programs would share a common theme of creating and sustaining a thriving New York City. It would also have a significant pre-college component and required admissions interviews and a summer program. It would also involve integration of academic and student services, working very closely together. One of the things that's engendered a lot of discussion is that it would require full-time enrollment in the first year. Also, integration of college credit and developmental or remedial credit, remiel education during the first year. There would also be an office of partnerships that would exist as part of the new community college, which would have New York City as a site for applied learning and internships. In January 2009, the chancellor authorized phase two for the planning, which involves the actual planning of how the new community college would be formed in all respects. And the new community college steering committee has already held its first meeting and has the goal of, of having a, the new community college have the possibility of opening in just a couple of years. In addition, and very exciting news, a few weeks ago, the Gates Foundation, we found out, is awarding CUNY a grant of over half a million dollars in order to assist with the planning for this new community college. And you may have seen, there's been a lot in the news about our proposing this new community college because it's so innovative and a lot of people are, we're hearing a lot from all around the country about what we're trying to do. We're doing something different than anybody else is doing. We're using research as part of this, the best research that's available on how's, what is the best way to structure the college in order to get the most possible success for the students. So I just wanted to make sure you're all aware of that.
What would be the maximum enrollment?
5,000 FTE. Five thousand FTE.
What is the location of that, more or less?
It would be in Manhattan, Midtown.
Around what?
And, well, the, the plan right now, but it'll take some years before this can happen, is to put it into the building that John Jay College is vacating when its new building is built. So, but that's going to take some years, maybe longer than when the new community college would be set up. But our enrollment pressure at the community college level is largest in Manhattan, so that's one of the reasons we want to put it in Manhattan.
This is a, this is a great program. This is one of the best things I think I've seen here in, in ten years. When I travel around the country, people want to talk about this. This, this has enormous national significance.
Is the curriculum being formed, or has it been formed?
Well, the, the planning document has proposed curriculum in it, but it, it's not a detailed curriculum, it's proposed majors, but, or concentrations, but the planning committee is now reconsidering those. The economy has changed a bit since this document was originally written, and some of the things need to be just looked at again.
So is that planning document you're referring to, do we have that, or do we have access to that?
It's online.
It's just, what we have is a concept paper.
Yeah.
And the concept paper has now taken the second stage. There, there's going to need to be very, very deep discussions with faculty, where we would cite the campus, what the curriculum would be, the financial needs of the college. There's a lot of stuff that has to be done with the state education department and the regions.
New York State.
Starting a new college is a big deal in New York State. There's a lot of things that, that have to be considered. But our chairman is, is right. Both of us have received a lot of inquiry from people around the country who are excited about the prospect of a fresh look at how we educate community college students, because all of us are deeply frustrated by the fact that relatively few students, after a long period of time, actually get their degrees. And we feel that we-
Twenty-five.
Twenty-five.
In six years.
In six years.
So, and, and I think our faculty-
We're thirty.
... are going to be up to the, up to the, up to the task of really, you know, tapula rasa. Let's just take a look fresh of how we could start and, and move ahead.
So it could be a prototype?
Oh, yes.
That's the point.
That's what we wanted.
That's what we're trying to-
And there's a website for the new community college, which does have, oh.
No, I'm just laughing, I'm so ignorant of these things.
Okay. There's a website where all the documents are available, what's going on is available. I, I could send you the-
Why don't you, I would, why don't you send the committee members, maybe the all the-
Send it to me, and I'll distribute it to the committee members.
The, the concept paper, I read it's not terribly long, very interesting.
And you can get everything on the website.
We'll send it to you by email tomorrow.
You need a computer.
The site.
Yes. You need a computer, yes.
And I know China is looking at this because they, they, they do not have community colleges.
Right.
And so they, yeah.
All right.
May I have a motion to adjourn on this?
It's all over.
Okay. You need to adjourn. Thank you.
Thank you.
Are we running on time?
Yes. It was perfect. Thank you. Thank you very much.
Yeah, you're probably even in medicine, so.
Thank you very much. Thank you.